I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown, Ohio Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. Law Director, Mr. Ben Yoder, please read the, or please call the attendance role.
Mr. Lawley.
President.
Mrs. Carter. Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slankka.
Here. Thank you. The first order of business this evening is citizen comments. We have, okay, let me see here, we have three items tonight. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present to council on record uninterrupted and have the floor. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to call first Beverly Aikens to the podium. And please go ahead and adjust the microphone so it's right there. Please do speak directly into the microphone. First, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Um, my name is Beverly Aikens. I live at forty-seven forty-seven Caprice Drive, Middletown, Ohio, four-five oh four-four.
Thank you. And can we start the time over again, please, Matt? You'll have four minutes.
Do you want me to start?
Let's begin, yes.
Um, I'm just here because I am J.D. Vance's mother, and as you guys know, he is our new Vice President-elect, and he thinks of Middletown as his home. His mother still lives here. His sister still lives in Middletown. He's got two nieces that live here, and I just think it would be really nice if we could acknowledge that this is his hometown and put up some signs. He graduated from Middletown High School, comes back here frequently to visit me and take me to dinner, and I humbly request that. Took less than four minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Aikens. Thank you so much. Okay, next, I would like to call Scotty Robertson to the podium. Please do adjust the microphone so you can speak directly into it, and first, please state your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Uh, Scotty Robertson, six-oh-eight Sixth Avenue.
And then, Matt, would you please reset the timer, please, to four minutes? Please begin.
Yes, I'm here also as the Vice President of the Middletown Area Ministerial Alliance. Of course, I have addressed this council in that position before, and also to speak upon the recognition of our Vice President-elect, J.D. Vance. I want to, first of all, say that anytime someone from our hometown is elected to such a high office, that's something to celebrate. It's not something that happens on an everyday basis in many small Midwestern cities. And so I want to affirm absolutely that that's something that should be recognized. But also, I want to speak for voices that have been made quite nervous and afraid by the election of Donald Trump to the presidency, especially communities of color, LGBTQIA-plus communities, and immigrant communities. And so I just want to make sure that any appropriate recognition of this accomplishment is also held in tension with the fact that there are many that have been made afraid and nervous by this election. And I think those voices need to be heard, and I think there needs to be recognition of those communities. Also, along with that, I want to respond to an article along the same lines from the Cincinnati Inquirer that had Butler County Sheriff Jones talking about making room in his jails for President-elect Trump's mass deportation order. While this council and our police department during the last Trump administration worked very diligently to protect and not put at risk lives and families of migrants in our community, we ask that especially our police department continue the same policy during any mass deportation order or policy directive that would separate or cause harm to migrant families that come from the federal, state, or local government. We also want our law enforcement leaders and officers to know that as long as you continue that humane and just action as it concerns our migrant families, we will stand with you against any pushback you may receive from our public officials who would try to force you to act contrary to your conscience. We must understand that these migrants, they are people, they are our neighbors, they are by very large a very peaceful population, and they contribute much to our local economy. So we, as the Middletown Area Ministerial Alliance, call on you to only support public policy and orders that keep migrant families united and safe while residing here in Middletown. I think anytime there's an election, there are people who win and people who lose, and there are people who celebrate and people who don't quite understand what's going to happen as a result of the policy proposals coming from the administration that has been elected. And while we can celebrate a person, we can also speak up against unjust policies. And so I just want to make sure that as this body makes declarations celebrating a person, that we also make declarations that speak against unjust policies. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. And the final citizen comic this evening is Rocky Sexton. Please come to the podium. Please do adjust the microphone so you can speak directly into it, and first, please state your full name, Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record.
Rocky Sexton, Melanin address, two-fifteen Charles Street, Middletown, Ohio.
Thank you. And Matt, would you please restart? Okay, thank you. Please begin.
All right, most of you guys have my contact information and easy accessible if needed. Tom and I would like to address the council on a very special issue, one that being a citizen of Middletown should be, make us all proud. As everyone knows, Middletown has had some, something awesome happen this presidential election regarding what political party we are all involved in. One of our hometown middies made it to the White House in Washington, DC to become our next Vice President, J.D. Vance. We have had a few people come from our small town that turned life around and making us proud over the years, like Kayla Harris, Kyle Schwaber, and now J.D. Vance. This should be something our city should showcase at our city limits, like the one-twenty-two Bridge, seventy-three interchange, the I-75 Corridor with a sign showing Middletown does have a success story and a bright future. I spoke to our State Representative, Thomas Hall, about this, and he and Senator Lang are working with the ODOT to see what can be done on a state side as things as well. ODOT specifically said, "City can do whatever we want within our city limits." I have spoken to other business owners and city leaders in our town who all stand behind getting this done. Hopefully, this is something we can move forward with and let others know Middletown is a place for hope and change as they drive through our town. I would like to thank everyone for their time today and consideration. I look forward to hearing your thoughts during your council comments. Also, on a side note, Tom emailed everybody here, and Tom's in the stands up there, and it brought back to his attention, only one of you guys messaged him back, Steve West did, on his email. And he wanted to thank you for your patience and time and talking to him about what was going on, and he didn't understand why his email didn't get read by anybody else. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. And that concludes our public participation for the evening. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lawley, followed by Councilmember Carter, and then to my right with Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn, and I will speak last. Mr. Lawley?
Thank you, Mayor. Point of clarification, Rocky, I did not receive an email from Tom, so if you forward, try again, but I did not receive one. I don't know if anybody else did, but I did not receive one, so I'll go back and check, but, because I respond to all the emails I get from people. Yep, thank you. The only thing I have, Mayor, is I'd like to do a, make Middletown a better place shout-out to Linda Mormon and Jay Mormon for their continuation of the Santa Parade. Unfortunately, this was the first Santa Parade I had to miss in a lot of years Saturday. I planned to be there, but an issue came up that I could not be there, but once again, I was told it was incredible, awesome, the kids loved it. I can't thank Jay and Linda Mormon enough. I know Linda puts a heck of a lot of work into it, so, once again, an example of people stepping up in this community to make Middletown a better place, and I know council appreciates it very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lawley. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening. I too would like to congratulate Linda and Jay because I participated in the parade, and my niece, who's six years old, enjoyed it, waved to people, she was so excited. And I'm waiting now for our ice rink to open because it's fun. I've encouraged people that I work with that does not even live in Middletown to come to Middletown because we got a lot of exciting things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things tonight. Very Merry Middletown has kicked off. I urge everybody to go to either the city website or Downtown Middletown Inc.'s website. Lots of activities on there, not only the, the ice rink and Light Up Middletown. But on another note, I want to thank the first responders here in the city. I had a friend of mine in a pretty serious accident last weekend. He called me right after he got off the phone with nine-one-one, and I was there within probably a minute or two, and there were already multiple units there, multiple police officers, fire truck, paramedics, and, you know, the, the commitment that our first responders have is just top-notch, and I'd like to thank everybody, especially those that showed up to, to the accident. It's on one of the really bad intersections where Roosevelt meets Briel. With that said, you know, last, last comment that I gave in the previous meeting, you know, regardless of political affiliation, whenever we have someone come from the city and make it to the big leagues, whether it be someone like Kyle Schorber or Kayla Harrison or J.D. Vance, I think it gives us, you know, we should take the time as a city just to be proud for a moment. And, and I agree, you know, with Pastor Scotty's comments, there are some people that might feel that they're, you know, they're concerned about the next four years, but at the same time, you know, I think it, it should bring us all together and we should celebrate it. Being on council, really, I mean, I think all of us, I can speak for all of us up here, I, you know, we represent everyone, every corner of the city, every single resident. And so when we have to make the tough, tough decisions that might be to the detriment of some, but for the overwhelming benefit of the city, it's difficult. But I think looking, looking at all of the success stories that we have coming out of this city, for J.D. to, to come from here and really fight to be successful in his life, whether you agree with his policies or not, it's something that we should commend. And it's something that we should tell our, our children and our grandkids and our nieces and nephews. You know, if J.D. can do it, you can do it. You know, he drank the same water that, that we're drinking, going to the same schools that our kids and our grandkids and our neighbors are going to. And so I think oftentimes, we look at younger generations and we go, oh, they're soft or they're weak. You know, I remember my grandparents saying that when, when I was a kid. But really, it's something to empower every, every kid in this, in this city, to take a look at it, and I urge everyone to, you know, talk to your kids about it. I think sometimes when we talk to our friends and talk to our family and our, and especially our children about anything in politics, we all have our jaded views. We might look at things from the left, from the right, some things, you know, from middle of the road, but I think we have to bring back the human context and explain to them, you know, J.D.'s from here. He's from here, and he comes back here frequently. He still has family here. My daughter works with his niece at Shattuck's Pizza, and it's just something that I, I'm a, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of. And I would feel the same way even if it was a, you know, the, the opposite party. If a Democrat was elected, I'd be really proud to say that person is from Middletown, Ohio. So I think it's something that we should all kind of take a look at and really think about it just from the Middletown perspective and say, this is a success story, period, and leave it at that. And, you know, over the next four years, take a look, you know, are there things that maybe happened in DC that can positively change Middletown? Having one of our middies in there? I'd like to, I'd like to hope so, and I, and I think, I think we will see some, some benefits and some changes. But it's something I think we should all talk about, because here being, you know, on council, it's something that all of us, all of us come from different backgrounds, and we all feel a certain way about different parts of the city or our community that we live in, but we all come together and we make decisions to help every neighborhood in this city. And it's something that we should do when we're talking about politics or talking about a certain figure that's successful, that comes out of Middletown. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Good evening, everyone. I kind of want to continue on what Mr. West was talking about. First of all, he's the Vice President-elect, so let's get him, let's let him get elected. He's going to be, or not elected, sworn in, I'm sorry. We have signage throughout the city celebrating a gold medalist in Kayla Harrison. We have signage in the city celebrating someone I went to high school with, Chris Carter. He's a, he was in the National Football League, and he was inducted into the Football Hall of Fame. We have an NBA, actually two NBA players, but one that's more recent, Butch Carter. He played in the National Basketball Association. We have Kyle Schwaber, who is a World Series champion and made it to the highest level of Major League Baseball. And let's not forget George Verity, who brought Armco here, who is, puts twenty-five percent of our money into the city. So, after he's sworn in, and I'm sure the staff will get the appropriate signage, show him as the fiftieth Vice President of the United States of America, we should celebrate that. And I'm sorry, but I don't think we need to be so sensitive that that's going to trigger someone and cause someone harm, because we're all human. I'm sure the folks that we have highlighted, that I just mentioned, I'm sure they've made mistakes in their lives that someone can research, but we don't want to highlight that. We want to say these folks lived here or are from here, and we want to say this, this is possible, like Mr. West said. You too can start here, and if you apply yourself, you can leave here and do great things and potentially even bring things back and help the city that you were raised in. So let's just keep that in mind, and I'm sure, like I said, staff will start the, the process of putting up appropriate signage, just like we have for Chris Carter, for Kayla Harris, Harrison. And we celebrate these people for the accomplishment that they have right now. To you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. I have seven updates this evening, and talking about very merry Middletown like Mr. West has as well. One of the things I wanted to just mention is that our ice rink with Holiday Hoopla is actually open. It opened on November fifteenth, so that's something that people can do pretty much every single day, I believe. There are so many fun ways to celebrate the holidays this month that there are actually too many to list tonight. So, as Mr. West said, I highly encourage everyone to visit DMI's website, downtownmiddletown.org, to see their calendar and all the events taking place this month for the holidays, some of which include fusion glass and stained glass classes for making gifts, shows at the Sorgh Opera House, a game night and ugly sweater party, the Santa Run One Mile and Five K, pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus, carriage rides, a gift wrapping party, a flash tattoo special, the South Main Candlelight Tour, and of course, like we mentioned, ice skating at Holiday Hoopla and the fantasy lights of Light Up Middletown. There's fun to be had and ways to make memories every day. So please do visit downtownmiddletown.org now to discover what is possible for you and your friends and family this week and weekend. The Town Mall survey is live through next Friday, December thirteenth. Please share this information. We encourage all residents and stakeholders in Middletown to complete this short survey. To find it, please visit our city website, cityofmiddletown.org, and search Town Hall at the Town Mall. You will see a link for Town Mall site redevelopment from December. Here you will find a link to the survey and more information. Sunday, December fifteenth, at two-thirty PM, in this, is the Southwestern Ohio Symphonic Band playing the Night Before Christmas fifty years of music at Middletown High School, including our own twenty-twenty-four Middletown Community Foundation winner, Sam Ashworth. For more information, please visit their website at sosband.org. The City of Middletown is hosting an open house meeting the next day called Town Hall at the Town Mall on Monday, December sixteenth. Located at the Town Mall in the former Elder Beerman Space, which is the beautiful entranceway with all the glass doors, there will be two meeting times that day to accommodate different schedules. The afternoon session will take place from three PM to five PM, and the evening session will take place from six PM to eight PM. Please attend, hear and see firsthand the results of the survey, participate in the information gathering, and give your thoughts on what might be possible at this very important I-75 entranceway into our city. We look forward to your input. You'll notice a new guest podium soon in these council chambers. Our acting city manager is looking for a modified podium to allow those with mobility issues and those who just need to sit when they speak to be more accommodating, accommodating and ADA-friendly. This will be new in the coming months. The end of the year is approaching, and that means that several of our city boards and commissioned members' terms are coming to an end. If you have an interest in serving on a board or commission for the City of Middletown and giving back to the city in this way, please do submit your application soon, as council will be discussing this at our second December meeting. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. I also did want to say that staff, like Mr. Horn said, will be working on the signage as well come January after the swearing-in, I believe. And then lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joy and satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight, and this concludes council comments. The next item on the agenda is city manager reports. Acting City Manager, Mr. Nathan Cahal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. Just wanted to provide council kind of a couple of updates and then bounce something off of you this evening. First of all, some of you may very well know that we've, we've been in discussions, also in concert with the Airport Commission, about seeing, about potentially having a new air show event at the airport, and we've identified a vendor and the like. However, I think that based on staff's input and wanted to do things right and really vet this with all of you one last time, because I know certain folks have been in the mix and not, I think we're going to, I think our recommendation is to kind of tap the brakes and, and if, if it's councils or others, is to program this for, for twenty-twenty-six, that if we do the event, we, we, we have plenty of time to plan it well and make it as successful as possible. But just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on that, just where we were. I know there may be some questions. The other thing is, is that wanted to just make sure that council was comfortable. Our, our Development Office received a, a grant from a local nonprofit a few weeks back, as that office, Lishmoreland's office, is looking at how to tackle a, an area of town that, that's a food desert, and looking at maybe a community grocer option in the vicinity of the Vale site or somewhere in that, in that area of town. There aren't a lot of good grocer options. And we've identified, over the course of probably about a year, there's actually two entities that have expressed interest. This Pat Landy Foundation has provided the city grant dollars to conduct some market survey work, also do some planning and, and, and site development concepts to see if that's something that, that may be successful and maybe an option for, for the city council to consider in that area of town. But before we put that on the agenda to accept the grant, we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't necessarily any objection to continuing to explore that endeavor for that part of town, but just wanted to ask that tonight.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Horn?
I have to, I will go back to the airport, sir. My, I pitched a proposal back in last May or June or something like that, and it had a three-tier system. The system that if you did this air show in May, one of the tiers you just should not do, which is the V.I., bringing in VIPs, bringing in Boeing, bringing in Miami University, bringing in all those folks. And till we get our FBO back, our FBO back, where we can actually show people, not the Cracker Box that we currently have, or when people land, they have to be shuttled off real quickly because we don't want to embarrass ourselves, that would be also a reason why you keep pushing that back until we, until we have a good portion of our airport that we can show off. Plus, that gives Butler Tech time to get their thing built. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm for us pushing it back another year, so we have our FBO and Butler Tech is complete. And there's also might be some other possibilities for the land beside that now. But that's just my thought on that. You were going to be able to do the show, meaning the Smith Park, food truck, people part, but the actual education and the VIP.
It was going to be limited.
Yeah.
And that was the drivers.
I wouldn't do it that way. I would, I would just make it where you do the three-tier system, and it makes it even, it makes the airport even more appealing for the growth that we want, to put it even more in the black than we already are.
Any other comments or on, on the airport? Yeah, I think that's a good idea to, I mean, we could certainly, staff could definitely make something happen this year, but I think waiting until at least twenty-twenty-six is a best practice to line up the kinds of
Our, our thought, our thought, Mayor, is that you only get one chance to make a first impression, and if the city is going to endeavor to do that, we wanted, we wanted, we want it to be well orchestrated.
I agree. Any other comments on that? Okay, anything else on city manager's reports?
On the, on the Vale?
Yeah.
Where exactly on the Vale side are we looking at that going?
That's undetermined, I, I would say, because, and that dovetails into something that we probably should talk about maybe at a later meeting, maybe we have a little more time, because we also have that existing structure, the Knights of Columbus Building, that the land bank has been inquiring as to whether or not the city wants to proceed with partial demolition of the back half, and I, I put the, I put the brakes. of the back half. And I put the brakes on that one because honestly, I don't believe this council's really talked as a group about that one way or another. But it wouldn't be, I wouldn't envision that impacting that part of the site. If anything were to progress, I would think it would be further down First Avenue, maybe towards, what is that, Baltimore? Towards that general area.
Okay. Any other? Mrs. Carter?
You said someone that was interested in?
Yes. So our staff has met on several occasions, one with a local market operator here in the area, another one that's a nonprofit operator that has a very similar facility and concept in the northern Dayton area, kind of near the vicinity of the
Jim City Market?
Jim City Market, yes, ma'am. They've expressed interest here. I think actually some of their staff are originally from Middletown, and they've identified that they're very interested, and there's a need for that type of establishment there in that part of town.
I agree.
When do you have to, what's the deadline to accept the grant?
The idea was just to place it on the motion agenda for the 17th. I think, my understanding in talking to staff is they would like us to accept it before the end of the year.
Okay.
I mean, it's a mod, you know, I don't mean that coming the wrong way. It's not only a ton of money, but it's several thousands of dollars, though, but that'll get us up to where we can start marketing a concept and see if that dog hunts or it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd be interested if it was in the area that you said, further down First, towards Baltimore.
Yeah.
I mean, there aren't any grocers around there.
No, I mean, unfortunately for that segment of, geographic segment of town, it's a lot of your dollar stores or convenience stores.
Yeah.
Where they have to track halfway across town, either maybe to Neillers or out east towards Kroger or Meyer or Aldi.
I mean, I'd be okay with it.
Gosh, yeah. I mean, having lived and worked and grown up in downtown for much of my life, that's one of the things I've always thought about. Like, it'd be nice to have something, especially within walking distance, green grocers, a grocery store, something. So I would like to pursue that as well.
Yeah.
I'm curious about the paperboard land.
Mm-hmm.
Could you put a grocery store there?
Potentially. I think we'll have more clarity on that once we get through the remediation process and we have our conditions of future use from Ohio EPA. That's in close proximity and would serve us the same neighborhoods, potentially. I don't think that either, you know, exploring one side the other is mutually exclusive. I think that's, we're right now in a, is there market demand, or more importantly, would there be market support of that type of facility?
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
The only other comment I have on that, and I know we had a presentation by a local couple who brought us a presentation on what they wanted to do with the Vale Site, and it's my understanding that that is kind of still out there. They're still interested in it. So what I would like to see is we look at this as a whole package and not piecemeal Vale and the KFC building and the structure attached to it. Let's sit down with all of them and come up with one plan for that whole area and not piecemeal it together, if possible.
Yeah, and that's actually, these grand dollars will help us do that. That's actually the intent is, because we want things coordinated, because it's a very large parcel. It's got a lot of ins and outs. It's got a lot of access points, and we want something that's in a coordinated fashion.
And more specifically, on the Knights Building, I think maybe here in the near future, we should really revisit that.
Yeah, I think I'd be very wise for council to give staff some guidance on it. You know, I'm coming into the tail end. I think Ashley may know a whole lot more than I do on this. But as I understand it, there's a series of, maybe a series of additions that are on the back half of that structure. Some are in better shape than others. The land bank had, you know, indicated that they would participate in a partial demolition that had come up recently in a land bank meeting, and the decision was, hey, let's just tap the brakes just yet. Staff, let's touch base with the council first.
Have we already spoken with residents in that area about the kinds of things that they need, that they feel that that would be beneficial?
That would be part of this process.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions on city manager reports? Hearing none, we will continue. Thank you, Mr. Cahal. The first item this evening for council would be the consent agenda. And while the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda? Hearing nothing, we will continue. Mr. Yoder, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's four items on the consent agenda. Item A is to approve the city council minutes of November 19th, 2024. Item B is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. Airport Commission for February 26th, April 15th, May 20th, August 19th, and September 16th, 2024. Architectural Review Board for June 11th, August 21st, and October 8th, 2024. Planning Commission for July 25th and October 9th, 2024, and Park Board for October 14th, 2024. Item C is to confirm the conditional appointments of Sean Figley and Andrew Prather to the position of patrol officer in the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police. And item D is to accept Robert Scott's resignation from the Historic Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. We will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, please call the roll.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda this evening is legislation. We have 15 items of legislation this evening, and Law Director, Mr. Ben Yoder, please the legislation.
Item number one is ordinance number O-2024-89, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing the purchase of kitchen appliances for new fire stations 82 and 83 from Big Red Appliances and Mattresses and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, please call the roll.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Second item is ordinance number O-2024-19, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Henderson Products, Inc. for the purchase and installation of UPFIT packages for five 2024 Ford F-600 trucks and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll call, please.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. The next item, please, Mr. Yoder.
Ordinance number O-2024-91 is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an extension of the contract with CBM Managed Services, now known as Summit Food Services, for jail food services in 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
The motion passes, and legislation passes as well. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Fourth item is ordinance number O-2024-92, an ordinance authorizing additional funds for the contract with CBM Managed Services, now known as Summit Food Services, for jail food services in 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
The motion passes, and legislation passes as well. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Fourth item is ordinance number O-2024-92, an ordinance authorizing additional funds for the contract with CBM Managed Services, now known as Summit Food Services, for jail food services in 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll call, please.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item?
Eighth item is Resolution Number R-2024-31, a resolution requesting the auditor of Butler County to advance to the treasurer of the City of Middletown, Ohio, taxes assessed and collected for and on behalf of the City of Middletown, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
The ninth item is Resolution Number R-2024-32, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency. This has to do with the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Yes, members of council, before you is a supplemental appropriation that would revenue place a remaining a little over $18,000 out of the ARPA fund. As you'll recall, one of the ARPA-funded projects was the extension of a centralized sewer up North Union Road through those undeveloped properties north of the hospital. There were $1 million allocated for that project, and we have come in under budget. And so this is what is left of that original appropriation that staff's asking to be revenue replaced and supplanted for future needs.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cahal, what will be the total amount that we've revenue replaced with this addition?
I believe we're at about, yeah, I think a little under 1.2.
A little under 1.2.
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you very much.
In that zip code.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
No.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Yeah, this is not a pleasant item to bring for you tonight. This is an unplanned item.
As you'll remember, the city took ownership of the senior center last year, and our maintenance staff has been doing a yeoman's job of bringing that property up to a better level. We have been struggling with HVAC issues in that building. I think some of you may have toured it. We were curious, too, at times as to why there was centralized heating and air, but many of the certain sides of the building had window air conditioning units and the like. Our staff has been dealing with, you know, looking at the VAV boxes, changing the dampers, the configuration of the building, the like. What we have finally discovered as the root issue is that the air handlers that were installed many years ago are about half the tonnage of what the ductwork and the VAV box systems were designed for. So there's, I believe, a 25-ton and a 20-ton air handler, two of them, when we should have like a 50 and a 40, or 50 and a 45, to push sufficient air through the building for spread, you know, and then, you know, return air and the like. What is before you is authorization for staff to make that purchase and to install that. There's new air handlers through a GSA contract. It's a bid and purchase consortium that we've used for other projects. There is a little bit of, there's not a little bit, there is about a 14-week lead time on these machines, but it's getting to a point where, I'm not going to say it's unpleasant, but it's, we're having to tax the existing air handlers and that system to maintain consistent temperature, humidity, and the like in that building, and it's causing some repair costs as well along the way. The proposal is to take the funds out of Fund 499, that's our Property Development Fund. That fund is designated for the development and upkeep and the like of city-owned properties. The revenue streams for that fund are predominantly our cell tower and co-location contracts across the city. We have a lot of cell tower and data companies that co-locate their antennas and transmitters on our water towers or other tall buildings, or place their poles, their towers on city-owned land on a land lease basis. That fund currently has a $1.2 million unrestricted fund balance right now. This would definitely eat into it, but it still allows us some free board to still spend out of that fund as planned for the 2025 budget. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cahal. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a few questions. My first question is, didn't we put a furnace in there almost a year ago? We spent nearly $48,000, I believe. Yes, we did.
I think we did, yeah.
Yes. So that we're just kicking that by the wayside?
No, no, no. These are the air handlers. The furnace is the system that creates the heat and generates the heat. These air handlers then are the machines that push the air through the building, through the ductwork into the system.
My concern is this being an emergency nature. It's, what are our alternatives here? I mean, $318,000 is a lot of money that we did not plan to spend on this event center ever.
That is correct.
And this event center, to me, has to turn a profit before we can start spending this kind of money on it. I mean, this Property Development Fund, to me, there's money in that Property Development Fund that we need to use elsewhere. We got six properties downtown here. We got, you know, what are we going to do with the Manchester Building? What are we going to do with the First Financial Building? We just bought a town mall. I mean, the Fire Department had to scrimp and save and get all the kinds of money they could find for the four fire stations we're buying. And I just don't see this as a priority to spend $318,000 on, especially in an emergency vote. And we haven't, I don't understand why this wasn't put out to bid. I see your explanation in there, but still, maybe somebody else has some alternatives we can do. I just, I have a lot of reservations about putting this amount of money into that project at this time. find for the, for the four fire stations we're buying. And I, I just don't see this as a priority to spend three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on, especially in an emergency vote. And we haven't, I don't understand why this wasn't put out to bid. I see your explanation in there, but still, maybe, maybe somebody else has some alternatives we can do. I, I just, I have a lot of reservations about putting this amount of money into a, 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 that project at this time.
Any other comments?
I do.
Mr. Horn.
Not coming at you.
No.
I'm really confused on how a modern building was built, and I'm in the construction trade, big boy, construction trade. So I'm really confused on how, one, a building was designed by an architect and an engineer firm, and they put, as you're saying, the air handlers that are half the size of the tonnage necess- necessary to push the air through. That's what these are. They're the big ground units, or they're up on the roof. RTUs, or they're ground units, and they just push air through the furnaces. So that was done wrong. So then my next question, which could be even a more worse price tag, has anyone done load calculations to make sure that the service, the electrical service, can feed these new double the size units? Because when I'm designing a system, I design it at eighty percent, meaning I can grow a, a system at twenty more percent for any future things that could happen. So it's just very confusing to me when this is, this is not a house, this is a commercial building, that someone missed it at the, the engineering phase, at unfortunately, our mistake phase, because if someone's reviewing these drawings for ten days, they should have looked at this and said, okay, here's the square footage of the building, here's the duck size, here is how far we got to push everything, and they should have came up with the same number that any HVAC company should have came up with. This is the size tonnage I'm going to need. This stuff doesn't change. This math does not change. It's been the same forever. So that's my concern of, okay, do we have a thousand amp switchgear in there and we're good, or it's, we have a eight-hundred-amp switchgear in there and you double the size, because these are big motors. These are not furnaces, these are not split systems where you have a furnace here and you have an AC unit outside. These are things that are sized, double the size of Mr. Yoder's desk and taller that you bring in sixty to a hundred amps, and that thing is cranking and it's pushing air throughout the whole area. Fortunately, the duck size is correct, I'm hoping. So that's where I'm really confused on a modern, commercial building, because I've been doing this now for, oh my God, forty years. So I always had to work with the HVAC unit folks and know, you know, bring the power to them and everything else that'd go to them. So if this building was designed with the wrong tonnage, and now we have to double the tonnage, I'm concerned, and you, and maybe they did their, their due diligence, and we don't have to upsize the service, because that's going to be a bigger price tag, Paul, um, to have to upsize that on, so now we're even bleeding more, because you got to have it. If you're going to have people in there, they can't be freezing, uh, or they can't be burning up, you know, if they're having an vent there, or, or seniors are doing something in there. It's just shocking to me, in the modern world, uh, that I've lived in, I've never heard of that, and I'm
No, no.
It's not you. It's really not you.
I share your shock, because I'm, I'm asking these same questions.
A, a system, a, a full-size, commercial building designed that had half the tonnage wrong? I mean, that's, you know, twenty, ten percent, okay, you know, you, instead of having a twenty-ton unit, you know, it's like, okay, we'll put a fifteen, it'll push, but to have half the size, and then we have to double the size for three hundred K for something we haven't even turned one profit yet, and you got to have it, or you might as to say, okay, come on in and, you know, we'll try to make, make you warm and try to make you cool. Um, but yeah, I, I, I never have even noticed, um...
Yeah, I mean, the best we can find, because I asked staff this very, very question, I'm like, has this been the way it's always, or been? Our permit records reflect that there, this swap-out occurred in twenty fifteen.
Okay.
That these units were installed in twenty fifteen. Don't know how they were approved, but that's what got permitted.
So when it was originally built, it was probably done right?
That's
And then someone tried to save some money. Okay, that makes me feel a little better.
Our maintenance staff did talk to one of the local firms that does this type of work. I think that actually remembers bidding on that project in twenty fifteen and not really understanding why they never got it, and
Now they understand why. So someone didn't check the specs, and then they just let it go through, because when an ESI comes to inspect it, he's just, he or she's just checking, okay, is, is the cable right? Is it, is it disconnected? And then, uh, the building inspector is just saying, okay, is it pushing air? He puts his meter on that, and that's it. So it's, at that time, if it was pushing the correct air, then it's like, all right, you know, but, so, okay, so at least it wasn't originally designed like that. Someone saved some money, and now we're being punished for it. Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. So just to kind of follow up on that, so it sounds like the load calculations are correct for the original structure itself.
Yeah, I mean, what's bothering our staff is why the twenty fifteen change was permitted.
Okay.
Should not have been.
So the electrical, the electrical work should be clear. We're good there.
We, we, we will definitely verify that before entering into any work agreement with anyone.
So, um, one of, oh, I'm sorry, did you have anything, any comments or questions?
Uh, well, he said that, this says that we're, you need authorization for a contract with Train U.S.
Mm-hmm.
And then I thought you said that our city employees would do the work.
No, they have been trying to chase the gremlins out there and troubleshoot, trying to, um, and, and at the end of the day, we're just, we're dealing with a, 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 air, you know, a cooling or a, or a heating imbalance that we can address certain zones of that building for the time being, but that other ones will get hotter or colder, depending upon the time of year. And it's just, it's a lack of airflow.
So will we continue to rent the building with this issue?
We're going to continue to endeavor to do so, yes, ma'am. You know?
What are we doing right now to heat the building? And what, because, just to be clear again, it's a fourteen-week wait period just for the, the machinery.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, so that's three and a half months.
Mm-hmm.
So kind of two things. Um, what are we doing now? What are we going to be doing for the next three and a half months to heat the building?
Yeah. So our pla- our staff's plan is to continue what we were doing through the summertime, um, or into the, as we were trying to get to the bottom of this issue, um, is that there will be parts of the building, I won't say are going to be, are going, they're not going to be cold or frigid, but they're not going to be, you know, toasty, sixty-eight, you know, degrees. They may be sixty. So some of the back, um, there's a way to damper off and have some of the back offices that aren't used for certain activities that maybe won't get as much airflow. Um, I know our, our maintenance superintendent is also looking at, um, ways to maybe recirculate the air through some other means and, and adjusting some of the VAV box settings and the like throughout the, throughout the system.
Will we need, like, space heaters? Would that help in certain rooms?
I, I don't, I don't believe it's going to come to that.
Our department would have a big problem with that.
Yeah.
Wasn't sure. Like, I'm not sure.
That's, Mr. Lally's already on that.
I'm just, I put a pipe in there.
Gotcha.
So, Nathan, are we renting the building to everyone that uses it, or do some people use it without paying, or how, how is that handled?
So obviously, our seniors are using it for their activities and the like. Um, we are, we have started booking, um, actually, we've gotten a couple wedding receptions, I, as I understand this, last week, um, that are in very near future. Um, I believe we have a bereavement coming up right now, a bereavement, kind of dinner, luncheon, um, some, uh, I think a baby shower, wedding shower, those types of events. But we're starting to get bookings, um, near, near, you know, near-term bookings, and then folks that are looking for twenty twen- you know, summer twenty-five events or even later. But we are, we are starting to get bookings.
Do you think that with the current way we're handling the situation now, and what we see for the next three and a half months, um, can we safely make it through that time, keeping the place heated, keeping people warm? And the reason I'm asking is because if we tack on another thirty days, like Mr. Lally was saying, and do a bidding process, that would add about thirty days, I believe, one more month, that'd be four and a half months.
Yeah.
What's the thought process around that?
It's difficult to say. Yeah. I mean, it's difficult to say.
I, you know, I've heard from some people there, and they're fine and comfortable in, in the facility. They don't really notice a problem, especially the senior citizens. What, you know, I think maybe, my, my concern is, is there an alternative? And I'm not so sure. Why can't we have an independent, um, mechanical engineering firm go in there and see if there are, are any alternatives? Not, not Train or someone who, you know, I, I, nothing against Train, but we don't want them to go in and, and, and do an analysis because we're paying them to, to do. We need an, I don't know, maybe Scott can answer to this, but an independent mechanical engineering firm that goes in there and looks and see if there's, aren't alternatives that are less expensive than three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
So even, like, putting it out to bid less expensive than a whole new system, or the two new systems?
Well, where we're, where we're jammed up here is, is we had an original design, which was apparently right. So all the ductwork and all the VAV boxes is designed for that system, Paul. That's it. So apparently somehow, some way, through the bidding process, they had five bids, and number one bid was like, probably not half, but probably twenty-five percent less, and they answered the right questions, but they, they installed the, the half the size tonnage that will push air through there. So, yeah, you could have a heapy engineering, and they, they do all of it. And you can say, come in, and they're going to say, okay, uh, give us the original drawings, we'll do the calculation, we pay them ten thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. And they're going to tell you the same, they're going to tell you, you have to have this much tonnage to push it through.
Right.
Because that's what this is. Th- this is not so much the heat and the air conditioners. Well, the air conditioners are attached to that system. So that's the problem is, is somehow we allow, not we, but the city allowed these units go in cheap, and now they don't push the air to where they need to be. And we really don't want PTAC box, boxes sticking out of windows, or even little mini splits with different, um, areas that, 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 uh, with, with the boxes, when you want this to be a, a professional-looking event center. And the thing is, right now, everyone's probably fine. But if we have an event, say a wedding, that has two hundred people, that's where that air has to be flowing, where that's the issue, I think.
Right. And we have had those events.
Yep. So if people are comfortable, that's fine. And, and you can limp along, but the thing is, is if you say, okay, we're going to do a, we're going to do a, a study, or we're going to have an engineering firm, a engineering firm, not Train, not Bryant, not whoever else, uh, makes these things for a living, um, York, have someone come in. Unfortunately, they're going to take the original drawings and say, okay, this is the size of the building, nothing's changed, no, have we added anything? Nope. But they're going to say, okay, this is the, this is the appropriate tonnage that you're going to need. Now, they might say, you can use this brand and it'll be ten percent less. But unfortunately, the federal government has mandated the HVAC industry so hard. Last September, just for your home, the AC unit that you would replace if you had to go brand-new, went from four thousand dollars to six thousand dollars, and not a dime of that goes to the HVAC installer. It goes to the gas, it goes to the manufacturer. So if we can find a, a cheaper way, but it, I don't see it being two hundred thousand, I don't see a hundred thousand being saved. But if, if you guys want to have a, or have staff have a engineering firm come in and tell you where you're at and what you have to have, and maybe the math has changed with the existing ductwork and VAV boxes and the systems, uh, that, that you can do, I would say, yeah, go for, go for it. But again, with that quarter period, that's pushing you almost into May for installation with the bidding process, because they have to put it out to bid, and then, and I'm not saying do this if no one feels comfortable. I'm just saying time, because you're going to start your events probably late May, late April, early May.
We hope.
And then it, there, there you go. And that's, that's going to be the moneymaker for us. Just a thought.
Once again, I, I think they were able to hold these events for the last couple of years with this system.
So is there any, from what you've all discussed with staff already, are there any alternatives that could save money? Because like Mr. Horn is saying, we do need to have this, and we want it to be professional. But is there any, anything that you see that could be an alternative? Does, does anybody want to speak to that?
I am, I'm not even going to pretend to be an expert in HVAC, um, design. Um, you know, th- this is, this is a decision of council and we'll staff-hold, you know, make things happen as best we can and, and, and deal with it on a day-to-day.
Well, it sounds like from what Mr. Horn is saying, I'll go ahead. Okay. Um, having an engineering firm come out, it sounds like they're going to tell us what we already know. Is that what you're saying? So with that But we'll have to write a check, we'll have to pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, he can, he gets up, up to a hundred grand.
I'm sorry. I'm just talking to you. So no, I mean, that, any, and I don't know if the city works with a specific firm, um, but it, it needs to be an engineering firm, not an architect, that actually does, that has a mechanical engineer, um, that does the math and does all those designs. But whoever you guys like to use, get them out there, if you can get them before the end of the year, because this year's kind of peeling off quick, and then they could, they'll just be able to tell you from the existing drawings and the duck layout and the size of the building and the units that are there, they're going to tell you, this is the tonnage that you have to use. Now, they might have suggestions, like if you use this one, uh, because sometimes when you buy things from other places, like Mitsubishi is, is very high, high-energy efficient and sometimes costs a little less, but guys, you're not going to get it down to a hundred and fifty grand or something. It's not going to happen. If it's, now, if you could do the bidding process, again, make sure that they're the right size this time, that'd be great. Uh, but that's, that's what you're going to get. So, uh, hiring an engineering firm to have a mechanical engineer, basically do the same thing that the drawings we should have on, hopefully on file still, because I don't know how old that building is, um, and they can, they'll just tell you, this is the tonnage that you have to have to push air to make everyone more than comfortable than we were making them.
So it sounds almost a little redundant and unnecessary. That's what I'm hearing, because if, if it, there's only one thing that we can do to fix this issue, is have the correct tonnage, then that's what we need to do.
Time has changed. I mean, I, I'm still living in the last century on a lot of my designs. I just have to update my codebook mind. So a lot of things I do, I still do it the old way, because that's the way I like it. A, an engineering firm might come in and said, oh, but the thing is, you can't reduct the place. You can't, I mean, that is, now we're talking one point something, two point something. So we have to say, okay, this is what we have throughout the building. Now, what is the most energy-efficient, cheapest way to push air through for the size building this is and for the u- the system that we have existing? And that's what they're going to tell you.
So tonight, we're looking at if we're going to be taking care of this right now, or perhaps hiring an engineering firm or, and/or rebidding?
My concern is that building isn't that old. So if they did a swap-out in twenty fourteen, my concern is that it was wrong from the get-go. They put it out to bid in twenty fifteen to fix the issue. I'm still hung on, we don't even know what the service coming in is, because if that has to be upgraded, what, another hundred grand, Paul? So, I, you know, I'm concerned, that building wasn't very old in twenty fifteen, so I, I don't know.
When was the, when do we, when would we normally replace these air handlers? How long? How many years? How long, how many years would, do these air handlers generally last? Like, when is the replacement schedule for these?
Well, most of the time, you don't have to replace the entire unit. You can swap, like, for example, these have twenty-horse electric motors on there. So oftentimes, you can service them and replace components, but an entire swi- that's what has me concerned, is like, they sunk some money into it in twenty fifteen. I'm a little worried that, you know, our service going to it might be under amperage, and it was just designed incorrectly from the beginning.
Does, do you, would Scott, Mr. Tadic know the answer to the replacement schedule? Would you, maybe? If you do, would you please come to the, twenty years? Okay, so we're like halfway there, not even. We're just coming up to halfway.
And that building wasn't that old when, when they replaced it in
Right.
Fifteen. I, yeah, I'm just concerned that what we're seeing here, like, Paul, I assume the numbers that you're seeing are pretty realistic for those two units.
Yeah, and that's what I mean, is, is let's just pump the brakes here. Let's get an engineering firm and just, whoever you guys use, just like when we, um, we had, um, Mr. Lally do the KFC, KFC, yeah, that's right, Knights of Columbus, um, Manchester and the Sunny Building, we did, um, building inspection to see what's, where we were structurally. Let's just see where we're at here. Have a bu- have an engineering firm come in, give them, the mechanical engineer can do, can do my world too. It's not a problem, not hard math. Um, just have them just reconfirm everything.
Yep.
And say, okay, this is our building, here's the original drawings, and they, and they're also, they're not just going to walk up and say, okay, write me a check and here's a report. They're going to walk through, they're going to check the ductwork, they'll, they'll check the size of it or anything else. They'll see what the units that are currently there, then they can verify everything. So maybe they did install the correct tonnage when they built the building, and then some, for some reason, when fifteen came around to do the change-out, they changed them out to half the size. Don't know how that got through, but, okay. So maybe we have the, if the, if it was done right at the beginning, Steve, the service will be So maybe we have the, if, if it was done right at the beginning, Steve, the service will be right as rain. Because it'll be at eighty percent with that twenty percent growth. If it was done wrong, in other words, when they did the twenty fifteen change out, and they were too small anyways, and now they got a double the size, you might have a concern.
Should we go ahead, then? The conversation might be, while we're taking the time to do this, might we go out to bid as well, to see if there are lower prices?
My, oh, another quick point I wanted to make is on Trane's proposal, page three of four, their proposal, the first bullet under the exclusions from the proposal, is hazardous material abatement and/or removal is excluded from this price. So when we're looking at, that's a lot of free on in those, with, with the A C units being connected on those. So this three eighteen, it could quickly, I mean, I, I'm looking at this as it potentially could be, you know, hopefully, service, power service is correct. But this could be a half million dollar endeavor by the time it's said and done.
Yeah, I, I don't have details on, on that particular carve out. It's something our staff is working on, but I can, I think it's.
And that, that even caused me even, even more concern then. We don't have those answers, then that worries me.
And the engineer could, we could verify all of this.
We address that, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if that causes more of, they get into something and they find asbestos, which shouldn't be in this building, or other types of things, or like you said, it was, you know, but, you know, getting rid of the air conditioner portion of these units wasn't necessarily contemplated, but.
Mr. Cahal, what would be the cost of the engineer coming in?
I have no clue.
Any ideas? No ideas? Okay. Is there any more discussion? Any more questions? All right, so at this case, Mr. Yoder, should we table this discussion, or just vote it down? What's, because we're gonna be looking at it in the future.
Yeah, I would just recommend either Mr. Horn or Mr. West to first and second the, the motion, just to get it to discussion, can withdraw their motion or second, and then staff can work accordingly.
Okay. Would you, or?
Withdrawn, withdrawn.
All right, thank you. And are you clear, Mr. Cahal, on the next steps?
Yes, yeah, we'll get right on it.
Fantastic. All right, Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Eleventh item is ordinance number O twenty twenty-four dash ninety-seven, an ordinance authorizing the amendment of a contract with R A Miller Construction Company, Inc. for the Middletown Road Improvement, P Y thirty-seven project, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Yes, so as council knows, when we're doing our, our major roadway proj, uh, roadway projects throughout the city for our paving program, we do those on a unit cost basis. So our engineering designers, they will identify what streets and what we're doing, and they will make estimates as to how many linear feet of sidewalk or curb or cubic yards of this, that, or the other. And then those are field verified by our inspectors as was work is being done, and those aggregate and paving is going down and being installed. In this case, R A Miller was granted a contract by the city with a not-to-exceed amount. After we have, after Mr. Tash's office had finalized all the lift tickets and, and delivery receipts and invoices, we came in, in terms of quantities, just over by about one-half of one percent for a, an adjustment of thirteen, a little over thirteen thousand dollars out of a two-point-six million dollar, almost two-point-seven million dollar project. These funds, so what is being requested of you tonight is to up that not-to-exceed amount under that contract by that, that thirteen thousand forty-six, sixty-seven, which will allow us to close out this contract. There's no need to appropriate any new funds. There are sufficient appropriations already in the, in the general capital fund to cover this addition.
Thank you, Mr. Cahal. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes. Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Twelfth item is resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and declaring an emergency. This is year-end various funds.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, this is the second round of our year-end appropria, deappropriation and reappropriation process that we do annually. What you'll see, what you saw in the staff report and in the legislation, there's a proposed additional adjustment to the general fund that has no, has a net zero effect on the, on the general fund. It's just moving things between a few line items there. But you're also seeing now the final analysis of some of our other special revenue funds or, or, you know, non-general fund, non-general fund funds. What you'll see here, like an auto and gas tax, it's just moving, deappropriating fifty thousand out of salaries and, and insurance to cover some, or, excuse me, deappropriations of some savings we had on a project to then cover some increased costs. The municipal court, that is a new appropriation for the courts fund, just due to the, the changes or the reasons listed. Also, as you will see, with our T I F funds, like we had the last time around on some of them, we have some T I Fs, excuse me. My apologies. We have some T I Fs that have generated more revenue than expected, and we do have reimbursement requirements to the local school districts within those T I F boundaries that are based on a percentage of what we collect. Since we have collected more, it's a good problem to have. We also have to expend more for those reimbursements, so that's accounted for here in this legislation. And then towards the end here, you'll also see adjustments to the various fund transfers. So as you know, we collect income tax, a portion of that goes to the Public Safety Fund, or it goes to the street paving, the street levy fund, or to the general fund, and then we do various transfers there. So there were some adjustments to be made for income tax collections towards the end, end of the year that'll allow us to make those final transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Cahal. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have just a couple of questions, just curiosity.
Yes, sir.
Don't fret.
Oh, you're fine, sir.
In the general fund, the, the one on the street lighting to cover higher-than-budgeted utility costs seventy thousand, did we get what, more lights, or just curious?
Um, I really can't, I know Scott lives and breathes that. He may have some insight there.
Our public works director, Scott Tadic.
I, it may be as simple as the Duke's rates were allowed to go up by, by P U C O. It probably might be it.
There were some increases.
The lights on Central.
No, it wasn't, wasn't those. We, I think we were just under budgeted, quite frankly.
Okay. I just, I just, that just stood out. Wow.
Sorry, I don't have a better.
No, that's, I just figured it was something like that.
We're gonna turn, we're gonna turn them off for all of December.
Yeah, well, no, we can't do that.
Bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Tadic.
My, my second question, and this actually looks, if I'm reading this right, to be a little bit encouraging. In the various funds transfer supplemental appropriation, supplemental appropriations are needed for the following trends, funds transfer account due to higher-than-budgeted income tax revenue. And you total those up, that's like six million dollars. So is that, you know, we're looking pretty good, six million dollars that we, than we projected, that we thought we'd have? Am I reading that right, or am I not doing something right?
That, yeah, the, the increase or increases in the transfers, the, the transfers weren't budgeted high enough, but, yeah, that's.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah.
Wasn't, okay.
Yes.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll, please.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
Thirteenth item is ordinance number O twenty twenty-four dash ninety-eight, an ordinance establishing a procedure for in authorizing purchases of asphalt by the city purchasing agent in twenty twenty-five, and declaring an emergency. No actions requested until the December seventeenth meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, mayor members of council, this is a, this is a housekeeping item. We typically will exercise the option to authorize our purchasing agent to make smaller asphalt purchases on behalf of our public works department, instead of, you know, having to go through the entire bid process up to this amount. So we're talking things that are small paving jobs, maybe a large water main break on a major thoroughfare in the middle of February. You know, we have to just buy a small batch of asphalt for those repairs. And where we live in this part of this country, in this part of Ohio, there's only really two vendors out there, and so certain plants are open certain days of the week or not, or they're, they have a certain O dot mix that day versus the others. So we have to be a little more nimble when we're buying these, these smaller batches of quantity.
Thank you. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no action to be taken this evening. However, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will continue. Mr. Yoder, next item, please.
Fourteenth item is ordinance number O twenty twenty-four dash ninety-nine, an ordinance establishing the pay ranges, pay policy, and benefits for various salaried and hourly classifications within the service of the city and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, yes, before you tonight is the annual pay and benefits ordinance. Really, nothing has changed for, since its first introduction at council, I think, last month. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cahal. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, the roll call, please.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
No.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Yoder, the next item, please.
The fifth, fifteenth item, excuse me, is ordinance number O twenty twenty-four dash one hundred, an ordinance establishing pay ranges and certain benefits for employee classifications in the Middletown Department of Health and Environmental, in the Middletown Development. Wow, I can't speak on this last one. In the Middletown Department of Health and Environment, and declaring an emergency. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Mr. Cahal, the staff report, please.
Uh, mayor members of council, before you is the pay and benefit ordinance. It's the sister legislation to the one for our city, our city staffers. This is for our health department employees, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, please call the roll.
Mayor Slamka?
Yes.
Mr. Lawley?
No.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the legislation passes. This concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything that they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
I have just two things.
Mr. Lawley?
First one is, in the town mall thing, we talked about a strategic planning session in January. So I was wondering if is it possible to go ahead and set that date on a Saturday in January to either discuss the town mall for an hour or two, and then what about strategic planning for the rest of the year, like council normally does in January? So I just wanted to throw that out there, for a date in January.
Um, could we look at our calendars and get back and have that conversation? Or do it?
Yeah, I, I just wanna.
I need to check with work.
I don't wanna wait till January to set a date.
Yeah.
I just, as soon as possible, if we can set a date in January. And are we just discussing the town mall, which we do have to do that? But I think we need to discuss, you know, give staff direction for what council sees as some strategic planning for twenty twenty-five.
I think it's usually like the second or third Saturday we do it.
Yeah, that's, that's, generally, I don't know, Ashley, if the town mall, your plan thing in there, if it matters.
I'm sorry. It's fine, she said it's fine.
So we're looking at.
Just some time in, you know, January would be great.
Eleventh, eighteenth, or twenty-fifth, I don't.
Do you mind if we could come back, because I do have to check with work. I do work Saturdays.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else does, but.
Maybe by the second meeting in December, we can set the date.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Does that work for you, Mrs. Carter? Okay. Did you have another thing?
The second thing, I'm gonna bring this up in, in old unfinished business, and that's the situation with the J D Vance. I think there's two issues I was hearing in the discussion here. And one of them is, is why we have not put anything out on any of the city's social media. I mean, to me, the communications department should have done this weeks ago. And I'd like to ask that the communications department get something out before the end of this week. Because that, that's what a lot of people in Middletown are extremely upset about. And it's my understanding, the communication department's been asked on several occasions to do so, and they have not. And I think that needs to be addressed. That's, that's the first thing. And then the second issue is what I talked about. We, we, we should do something for a Middletown resident who, who got to the level that they're at. And whether it's name a street, put signs up, have some type of event, that's maybe something. I, I know that the way we've handled things in the past, and I wouldn't be opposed to maybe having a task force look at this, get some residents from the city, just a few, and look at it between now and the inauguration about what Middletown might wanna do on a larger scale. But I just think the J D Vance thing is two things. It's one, the city has not even recognized it on any of its social media page. And then two, the second thing is, is maybe something a little bit more substantial, like we said. Signs, road, naming, what have you. It's just a suggestion to staff.
Any other comments or?
I, I'd like to comment. I would think that we would wait and see what happens. I mean, I think everyone that we have signs up for proved themselves before we put those signs up. I think about Kayla. She didn't get a sign until she went and won.
J D won?
No, I mean, she, she showed us some activity before. Let's see what he does. Why can't we wait and see what he does?
What we wanna recognize him for, he's already done.
Yeah, I think that's the conversation.
I'm talking about, what will he do when he get in office? What will he do? He, he won, he's in office. Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm saying this because I'm thinking, what's the rush? What's the rush? If he gets in office and create havoc with sending him and Trump sending the people out of the country, all of the things that they have said that they wanted to do, if all of this stuff happens, we're still saying yay. I, I'm trying to understand.
I think it's, I think it's like multiple layers in that. Like, for one, like, for example, Kyle Schwaber, you know, he got drafted to the big leagues.
Right.
Right? He hadn't really done anything in the big leagues. But we still recognized and celebrated him long before even won a World Series, right? I think for, it's multiple layers, like, the, where a lot of people are frustrated is that there's not even been recognition that he's going to be a Middletown, you know, graduate and resident is going to be the vice president come next month.
Where did he say he was born? Where did he say he was from in his book?
He's, he's always claimed Middletown.
He, he was born in Middletown, correct?
No, Kentucky.
Well.
I think he was born in Middletown.
But, but he's always claimed Middletown to be his, but, but here's the thing. I, I, you know, I don't wanna get too political, but, you know, the federal government, state government, even the county, like, some people can get caught up in what Sheriff Jones said, and, you know, all this stuff about, you know, mass deportation and splitting families, and they, they politicize it. They, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we're a country of laws. We have, if I committed a crime, I would be separated from my family. If you come here illegally, that's the risk you take. That is my soapbox, okay? So now, I, I have, many of my closest friends have immigrated here, okay? And the point I wanna make is that there is a significant immigrant community and population in this country, not only locally, that have done it the correct way. And they're very frustrated and mad at the current administration that they've allowed a free pass when they had to go through and do it the proper way. So I, people wanna get caught up in what the media says all the time, and they wanna hang on to things. But at the same time, we have to look at the reality. We have to look at the reality, and there's a lot of hard truths that, that this. We have to look at the reality, and there's a lot of hard truths that, that this country's going through. What we're saying is, the fact that the city won't even recognize it, that a Middletonian has been elected as vice president, that's, that's a problem. I mean, the city schools did, a lot of different organizations around the city did. But for the city not to recognize it, and I'd say the same thing if it were a Democrat and independent, I, I would just be proud, right? I'd be proud. It's something we should celebrate. We should recognize it, you know?
And that's what I think, um, because, again, we don't want to get political. But, um, at, the, the thing is, uh, maybe the word recognize versus celebrate. You know, I feel, and again, I'm just speaking on my behalf, that it is fair to recognize. And that is in the works. That is happening, like, as Mr. Horn was saying, um, the.
It takes two seconds to make a social media post. And the fact that city staff, city staff will continue to come, and not all staff, not all staff, I want to make that clear. But let's not get lost in the weeds. Staff expects council to continually back them, hire, give raises, push things through, hold up our end of the bargain. And then, when it comes to other things, it's not a two-way street. And if, if you were to say that there is a, a town like Middletown, you know, Rust Belt, Steel City, you know, here in middle America, where a lot of our communities struggle and a lot of our families struggle, to say, hey, there's going to be a city where a young man, you know, had a lot of struggles, overcomes all of those, and becomes vice president, and the city doesn't recognize it, regardless of political party affiliation, you would scratch your head and go, what? Like, what's going on, you know? And that's how polarized this country is.
Uh, Mr. Cahal, would you like to speak to, uh, the choice of staff? Or would you like to say anything at this point?
No, I mean, I, you folks, I think have demonstrated that, you know, if anything, you know, and, you know, we typically don't tread in these waters as a staff.
Yeah.
I'm happy to, you know, I think carry the, the torch, and, you know, I think recognize is very appropriate. Um, I think as there's other plans to, to recognize, um, you know, I'll say this, is that I just, you know, it didn't really dawn on me the morning after, the day, two days after, to say, hey, let's, let's put a post up. It just, we're here to, you know.
But we'll, but we'll put posts out there, we'll put, the city will post all kinds of crap on Facebook.
On several occasions, staff's been asked to put stuff on our social media page, and it hasn't happened.
Okay. I mean, we'll put stuff out there that's not even affiliated to Middletown.
So I can follow up on it.
Was it, you're saying the acting city manager asked?
What's that?
You're saying that he, the staff was given direction by city, acting city manager?
No, I'm asking, no, I think clarification is.
You can, you can see on several points that, uh, the communication department was asked to put something on, and they have not.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm unaware of that, but I'll follow up.
Okay, well.
I guess my point is.
By the end of the week, we'll see something.
When it, when it comes to stuff like this, it's like, the, the fact that it's not like, hey, we need to come up with something. Anytime we get, we've had, we've had international reporters in this city since July. I have sat down with people from at least a dozen countries. And of course, you know, journalism, they, they want to work an angle, whatever. And they want to either discredit his memoir or find out, hey, has Middletown changed? And I would just tell them, drive around the city. There's still people around that are facing the, the same struggles in 2024 that he was years ago. And so I, I'm not, I'm not an advocate for his memoir. I didn't, I wasn't in his shoes. But what I'm saying is, we'll post on Facebook World Kindness Day and other types of stuff that's not even related to, to Middletown. It doesn't even, it's not, it's, it's not anything that's Middletown-centric. But then when it comes to something like this, come on, guys, it's unacceptable. It's 100% unacceptable. And I, I, it, it doesn't, and like I said, it doesn't matter if it's a political person that makes, makes it to the big leagues, or if it's somebody in the, the sports world, or a former Middletown graduate becomes CEO of a Fortune 500 company. You know, just the other day, a Bishop Fenwick graduate was crowned champion on Jeopardy. Guys, we've got success stories. Why are we, why are we posting things that don't even, don't even involve Middletown?
I'd like to hear from the mayor. She started talking about this incident, about the, um, the whole issue of not saying anything, and, and I think she, her opinion matters.
Oh, well, thank you. Um, well, I'm just one person, but I think we've, we've spoken quite a lot. I am, and not politically affiliated, I don't, I'm not a political person, so that's something that I feel as well. Um, I think we can recognize, I think we all agree to that. Um, we want to understand that we do represent everybody, and it is a polarizing thing. But the recognition is in the works, and that is something I think we can all agree with.
Right.
Um, so I think moving forward, that's definitely going to be the case. We've got the signs coming up, hopefully. I think there's even going to be an article written as well in our newsletter. But that's, I think that's fair. I think we're moving forward.
I understand you, we've reached out to Mr. Vance's team, and we're coordinating some, some piece of article with, with them.
I would just say, in Middletown city schools, which I've been very critical of this year, took them five seconds to make a recognition post that a Middletown grad became, won the election for vice president. So it, it's just, it's the little things, right?
Yeah.
And, and it's, come on, guys, this isn't, this isn't rocket science. I mean, it's just, it gets to a point where you just kind of roll your eyes. And like I said before, you know, there were people that reached out to me when I attended J.D. Vance's hometown rally. And I'm like, I would do the same thing for any, if, if, if they were on the other side of the aisle. I represent everybody in this city, not just Republicans, not just independents, not just Democrats. You have to represent everybody. And if there's a political figure, or a sports figure, or anybody who comes to this city that's from here, and they've had that amount of success or achievement, however you want to label it, I mean, it behooves us to go to it and support them. And that, and that goes beyond, I mean, that's not only, you know, I, we can't pick and choose. We can't pick and choose. We represent the entire city. And so it's, and that's, I think, something that at times you have to go, with the communications of the city, you got to remember, like, you represent everybody, and you rep, and especially someone like J.D., you, you don't have to make a political post. It's not a political post. It's a recognition post, like, hey.
I agree.
You know, a kid from such-and-such avenue graduated Middletown High School, you know, such-and-such year, you know, from here, born and bred, blah, 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 whatever. You don't even, you don't have to make it a political post. It's a recognition, you know? And so I just think it's, it's a little frustrating when I see some of the social media posts. I'm like, we can, we can post about things that don't matter when it comes to the average Middletown resident, but something that people have ties to, that are, I mean, a lot of his friends live here, his family lives here. I think it's just kind of a slap in the face, me personally, but I know a lot of people feel that way. Everybody wants to politicize everything. It's not, it's not political. It's, guys, we're, we're in Middletown.
Sounds like that's good direction, recognition.
One last thought from me, so I can, we can conclude this.
Mr. Horn?
So, let me make sure we're clear. So we're working on signage that says, J.D. Vance, 50th Vice President of the United States of America.
Yeah, some of those ones, yeah.
Then you're also working on doing a post, and also he's on, when does the winter newsletter come out?
Should be coming out, I believe, the second week of January should be hitting the mailboxes, as I understand it.
So, and the thing is, and maybe no one remembers this, is when he was selected as his running mate, Clayton Castle, uh, wrote a very beautiful piece.
Right.
And Clayton Castle is a Democrat, because the very next two weeks later, he was very happy that they picked who they picked for their, their running person. I rarely comment on Facebook, because I see the level of intelligence that's usually there. Mainly Middletown graduates, I'm thinking, like me. But they attacked him on both sides. They attacked him, one side said, why would you say something nice about this man? And then the other side said, you didn't say enough. So, put the post out, and then they'll do what they're going to do, because they're bored while the rest of us work our jobs and such. But it is very important that we have this, because we did recognize, um, a Olympian. We did recognize a person who played in the National Football League and then made the Hall of Fame, which is harder than anyone ever knows. We had a person who played in the NBA. We had a person who built this city, uh, through a steel mill. We have, we had a person who played at the highest level and won a World Series. And most likely, if he continues his career the way he is, he'll be in Cooperstown, and then we can add to the, the list of being proud. So it isn't, we're not going to put 50th Vice President of the United States, Republican, J.D. Vance. It's going to be Middletown resident, 50th Vice President of the United States. We're proud of that person. I know what you're saying, Jennifer. What if he really does bad things? That's how you remove signs, when people screw up, you know, like when, uh, I'm not going to go there. But anyways, it, that's when you remove signs, unfortunately, when people do, do silly things. And sometimes they don't remove signs, and they should. So we just have to be celebrating the person who was, who lived here, um, and who is going to be sworn in as the 50th Vice President of the United States of America, and then see where it goes from there.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for that robust conversation. Uh, any more comments or any other unfinished business at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda tonight is new business. Do any council members have any new business this evening? Mr. Horn?
I have new business, and I should have put it in the last, but we'll make this new business. I was made aware that, um, J.D. Vance's mammal, that's what we all call him here, instead of grandma or mimi, live close to Miami Park. I would like just, and this is where you have to have a conversation with, with the family and everything else. But maybe we think about a memorial, something that we put in strategically at Miami Park as a token of our appreciation for her living here, choosing to live here. And then the J.D. Vance's, uh, that was, and that was a person, if you read the book, if you watched the movie, that person grounded him while his mother was trying to get clean and get her life together. And that is a person that's very, um, close to him. He might say, no, don't do it. But I was told that park is important to him, and maybe we do a memorial, not for J.D., but for his mammal. And just, maybe just a remembrance or something, because we do that throughout the city for other folks and other, this used to be here and such. So might just be a rock with a nice copper plaque just mentioning that. Because that, she was a citizen here, too.
That's a nice thought. I actually really appreciate that, too, because in his book, he talks about how he would not be where he is today without the help of friends, family, mentors.
And that might spur on, again, people who are taking care of, of kids while maybe their parent is struggling. So it's like, okay, look, look what happened here. I need to continue to do this, because this might end up where this person is, gets their own plaque.
It really speaks to what support can do for people. Absolutely. Any other comments, questions, not questions, comments, or any other new business? Hearing none, we will proceed. Uh, the next item on our, sorry, the next item on our agenda is executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of PRC 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and G8 to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or to negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance, provided that both of the following conditions apply. One, the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of Chapter 715, 725, 1724, or 1728, or Sections 701.07, 3735.67 to 3735.70, 5709.40 to 5709.43, 5709.61 to 5709.69, 5709.73 to 5709.75, or 5709.77 to 5709.81 of the revised code, or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. Two, unanimous quorum of the public body determines by a roll call vote that the executive session is necessary to promote or protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to move to executive session. We will proceed to vote. Mr. Yoder, please call the roll.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slamka.
Yes. It has been, um, the yeses have it. We will now proceed to executive session. We will be returning to open session to adjourn.
Please.